Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on August 1st, 2023. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have one tiny change to the agenda today. We are going to read the proclamation ahead of the insurance review, so moving item seven, item eight to item seven. With that, do I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one step forward or raise their hand, we'll close public comment number one and move to consideration of proclamation recognizing August 7, 2023 as Purple Heart Day. Supervisor Hens, would you like to start?
Yes. Whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as the badge of military merit by General George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America. And?
Whereas the mission of the military order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill amongst the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. And whereas Story County has a large, highly decorated veteran population, including many Purple Heart recipients. And?
Whereas Story County appreciates the sacrifices our Purple Heart recipients made in defending our freedoms and believe it is important that we acknowledge them for their courage and show them the honor and support that they have earned. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim August 7th, 2023 as Purple Heart Day in Story County and encourage the citizens of the county to show their appreciation for the sacrifices all Purple Heart recipients have made in defending our freedoms to acknowledge their courage and to show them the honor and support they have so selflessly earned. I move the proclamation.
Second. Moved and seconded. Hens. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Were we doing, were we doing a picture this morning?
Yes.
Okay. I believe we have, we have quite a group here. If you'd like to move up to the, to the front. We'll hear. Okay. Do you, did you print one out in a folder? Okay.
You don't have to smile.
Wherever you guys want to just get in there.
I could, I could move. This way?
Yeah. I'm scared.
I won't lie this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Bryce. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving now to the 2023 insurance review. We have Steve Goodhue, Susan, is it Hosher? Hosher. Apologies. And Andrew?
Rickless.
Rickless.
Well, good morning. Thank you for placing us on the agenda this morning and giving us an opportunity to provide a review of your insurance, something we like to do annually. And we appreciate the opportunities. As Latifah mentioned, I'm joined by Andrew Rickles and Susan Hoscher who both are part of this insurance team. And we've got about eight slides we want to walk through. It shouldn't take a lot of time, but we'll just remind you as we get started, your insured, your property and liability are insured with ICAP, the Iowa Community Insurance Pool. You've been with ICAP and been with that pool since 2002. You're also insured on the work comp side with the Iowa Municipal Workers' Comp Association, IMWCA, we refer to it as. You've also been there since 2002. Both have been a good place for this, for this county. We've looked at other options over time. I think maybe three or four years ago, we looked at other options and the pricing at that time was, was really good and really competitive. And I think both ICAP, IMWCA, IMWCA continue to be good places for loss control, claims management, premium stability. So with that, we're going to walk again through these eight slides. I'm going to let Andrew start with the first four.
Sure. I'm going to hit on the work comp first. First slide here, what we're going to walk through is kind of a comparison from this past year to the previous four years. We'll kind of give you a five-year snapshot. First slide again is just your number of paid work comp claims. You'll see this most recent year, the 22-23 term, we had a little bit of a bump. 26 paid claims, still nothing of any concern by any means. If you look back at 2020, you can just see that was obviously when we were COVID, kind of shut things down for a bit. So every client we have, 2020 work comp claims were down. But again, claims are up, not a huge really worry, but again, just over years past, the number of claims have increased. I'll go ahead and flip the slide. So here's the work comp incurred losses. You'll see again, the far right-hand side there, the 22-23, that 82,000, that is the amount that has not been paid yet. That is still in reserve. I will say that a large majority of that is just one claim. So it's no, there's not a lot of claims out there that are in reserve. Large majority of that is one claim. Don't know where that claim is going to go, but as it sits today, again, they think they're going to pay out 82,000 going forward. We had a good stretch between 1819 and 2021, three outstanding years. Had a little bit of a bump last year, which we'll talk about here in a second, how that affects your rates. And then again, we were, we're up a little bit this year in claims as well. Again, still not a concern. What, the tough thing with what the story is doing, your claims history has been so outstanding. To compare it to years past, it's still really, really, really good. It's just not as, I'll even say, perfect as it was in the years past. So you're still in great shape. Everything looks good. But again, we had a little bump in the last couple of years. Flip the slide, please. So here's the great news. So as I mentioned before, your work comp claims history, you get what's called an experience modification factor. So based off your claims history is kind of what factor you get to your rates. So it's a long calculation, but 1.0 is average. Anything you have below one means you're having less than expected work comp rates. Anything above one means you're having more than expected work comp claims. So the county's mod is .67, which means you're getting 33% credit based off your claims history. IMWCA is a work comp pool throughout the state of Iowa. They insure 79 of the 99 counties in Iowa. Yours is the fifth lowest experience mod of their 79 counties. So it's absolutely outstanding. Again, last year at .60 is, again, you're rising this year from a .60 to a .67. But again, it's still very, very, very good. So again, that goes back to your claims history, history, your safety here at the county. And again, everything looks really, really good. Flip the slide. So work comp, there's many, many factors to get your work comp premiums. It is payroll times rate and then times your experience modification factor. So I just want to show here, here's your payroll by class. Each class is given a rate per the state that, you know, so obviously, you know, a street road paving rate is a much higher than a clerical rate, just for work comp purposes. Overall, your total payroll was just over $19 million. And to compare that to last year, we were just over $18 million. So again, as we get to the end here, you'll see work comp premiums did increase, but a large majority of that increase was because your payrolls increased as well. So I'll go ahead and flip it over to Steve.
Yep. Thanks. Why, this is a look back, a five-year look back at your property liability and auto claims. And I'll just walk down through these fairly quickly. You see, you've had 11 claims as a reminder, and as you know, you self-insure your auto fleet. But so these are claims being brought against you by others. And really not a significant number when you look at it, 10 claims, 11 claims over five years. You divide that in what's been paid, it's about $3,500 a claim. So those are not serious claims. You got one large or one open claim right now in the, in that auto category. Liability claims, four claims over five years, $15,000 paid, nothing in reserve. Property, a little more paid out on that over the past five years. That, as you might guess, is deracial related. We had several claims during deracial or paid out. We had some hail and water, some things that hit Creek Grove, and you can see 186,000 paid out. It's a little bit still in reserve, about $1,400. I think that's still related to the geothermal claim, which has some history to it, but nothing significant there. And then some professional employment liability claims that have been filed against the county over time, but nothing's ever paid out. So those were deemed to be not of any liability on your behalf. No payments, no reserves. So if you total up those claims, 21 claims over five years, four per year, you've got a lot of employees, you're doing a lot on a day-to-day basis. I would characterize that as a really good claims history. Deracial impacted everyone in the county, and so you had some payments there, but not significant payments over the past five years. And an overall good claims history in addition to what Andrew mentioned to be work comp. Next slide, this is a coverage snapshot. You've seen this in the past. Didn't think we'd go through this in too much detail, but you've got 83.6 million of property and equipment. I'll show you the breakdown in a minute. Property is subject to a $50,000 deductible. We did increase that about four years ago. It was 10,000. We did the analysis. We looked at your claims history and we thought at the time it made a lot of sense to reduce premium and you, you gave us that approval to do that. So 50,000 already deductible there, 10,000 really on everything else, equipment, general liability and so on. And these are, these are the standard limits, if you will, through ICAP. We did talk, we met earlier with Latifah and Alyssa and Stephanie. We did talk a little bit about cyber liability. 250,000 is a relatively low number, given your exposure that you likely would have. And so as a general, you'd want to see that maybe at a minimum of a million dollars. I think it was so noted, I think Alyssa mentioned that the county is working through multi-factor authentication. That would be a minimum standard to get any higher coverage or any higher limits than 250,000. And so I think we agreed to maybe talk again after the first year about that, maybe once the county gets to MFA and some other safeguards and something that we would strongly recommend increasing again to 50s at a minimum. Next slide is a breakdown of your property, your 83, $84 million. 68 of that is in buildings. We did have a third party, your ICAP, we worked with ICAP on a third party about six years ago, looked at every building, looked at the value of those buildings. We increased about eight, eight buildings, our insured value for about eight buildings at that time. We continue to have increases, or ICAP continues to take increases on annual basis simply due to cost of materials, cost of labor. That would be the case across the industry, whether you're looking at commercial buildings or residential buildings. So about 8% increase there. And I think we've got those properly insured. Personal property would be contents, furniture fixtures, that type of thing included in each of the buildings. Computers and equipment would be leased, leased equipment only, or leased computers only, 370,000. Fine arts, cannons, statues, things like that, 460,000. And then we've got a lot of property scheduled, secondary roads, conservation, sheriff, sheriff's equipment that's scheduled to make up that 7.5 million. And then a number of things unscheduled, also sheriff's department, equipment, conservation, just about 800,000 there. So that comprises your 83.6 million. Again, those values went up 8% this past year, and we think that's a good thing again, to kind of adjust those and make sure they're properly insured.
Steve, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure. Yeah.
So does that include the new building that we've recently purchased as well?
Yes, I believe we did just add that maybe 60 days ago, 30 days ago. And then you can see what your insured value was last year, 77.5, it went to 83.6. And we want to make sure those are properly insured and, and I think they are. Last slide, here's your premium breakdown. If you look at the ICAP package premium, it's up 11%. We do work with other municipalities across the county. And I just looked at those the other day and I did an average. It was about 18% up across all those municipalities for, for their property and liability. I think your 11%, although it's an increase, is fair. It's competitive. I think ICAP treated, treated this renewal well. Your comp premium, as Andrew mentioned, going up from 118 to 130, it really is a function of your rate going up. Excuse me, your, your mod going up from .60 to .67, and then your payroll went up as well, about 1.4 million. So there's no rate increases there. It's all related to the mod and related to your payroll increase. And total premium increase of just a little over 12%, which again, if we stack this up and compare it to others, is, is really, really competitive. Want to say a couple of things just in closing, and then we'll stop and take questions. Your work comp, as Andrew mentioned, continues to be among the best from a, from a mod standpoint. And as you look here from a premium standpoint, your gross premium is 425,000 before discounts. And so then ICAP, or excuse me, IMWCA gives you a discount for a large premium. They give you a list, discount for longevity, and then the 33% discount for, for the mod. So you, you have discounts of 286,000 resulting in a premium of 138,000. When we looked at this four or five years ago, we just couldn't even begin to touch it with any other carriers. It's a, it's a good premium, a competitive premium. Last thing I'd say in closing, and Andrew touched on this, you really do have a good claims history, both with comp and property and liability. I think that's a function of, of your commitment to safety and loss control in this county. I sit in and attend the safety meetings that Stephanie chairs on a monthly basis. I think it's a great committee. They, they do great work. They have done great work for many, many years. And I think it shows here in your, your loss history and, and your insurance renewal. So with that, we'll stop and take questions that you may have.
Well, I just have a very, very general question. It may not apply to this at all, but we're seeing everything in the news about insurance reinsurers going out of the market. This kind of thing. And I personally got a letter.
Yeah.
So I, I just wonder what with ICAP and with, with this insurance, with the workers' comp, do you see in the future any big changes?
Yeah. So I mean, the timing was wonderful. Ames Strip had an article just today, reinsurance. So I kind of knew this question was going to be asked. Yeah, the, the storms have changed. Iowa is getting hit extremely hard. Not just this year, not just last year, but going back to probably 2018, 2019, things have changed. I always say there's a reason there's a lot of insurance companies based in Iowa, based in Des Moines, it's because the climate has been so good for so long. That's changing. And so the state of Iowa, and I'll throw Minnesota, Illinois, Nebraska and Wisconsin and that, is now getting hit very, very hard with storms. Rates aren't keeping up. Insurance companies, some aren't going to make it. The reinsurance market has just been flipped upside down. So there, they can't get enough rate, they can't get it fast enough. So I'm just speaking property right now, too. I'm not talking, I can, I'll hit on work comp here in a second, but the property market is going to change. It's, it's hitting right now with a large majority of your rate increase on ICAP was property related. You have $83 million in property. Deductibles didn't change, but I can tell you rates did go up on that. I would anticipate next year rates to go up again because when reinsurance treaties come up every year, and they're typically at the end of the year, but throughout the year, those rates are going to go up for the companies, which is then now passed back to the client. So I don't see it changing in the next two to three years on the property side. From a homeowner's standpoint, you're going to see rates go up and you're going to see deductibles go up, and that is across the board with every single carrier. So now let's move over to like work comp. Work comp, it's been very steady. Rates have actually been going down over probably the four-year period. I don't see that changing. I mentioned before, work comp premiums is based off of payroll, rate, experience modification. That's the major, major factors. Payrolls are all going up, so, but claims are pretty much staying steady. So that's what's dropping the rates down. So then again, the state kind of, they modify or they change those rates every year based off whatever claims are turned into the state by classification. So yeah, property is going to be, it's going to be tough for a while.
Might just add, I think IMWCA continues to be profitable. If you look back, I think years ago Supervisor Clinton used to serve on that board. I don't believe we have a representative on that board today, but they continue to be profitable. ICAP is working through some losses the past couple of years. I think they're doing a good job. I think it's well managed. And I don't think there's any concerns or issues there about solvency, but I think they're working their way through it and you're, you're feeling some of that. That's, there's always benefits and disadvantages to being part of a pool. And as Andrew mentioned, you're, you're feeling some of that right here. Other questions?
I don't.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the ongoing relationship. Really enjoy working with county staff and certainly appreciate the relationship with you as well.
Same.
Thank you.
Good to see y'all. And thanks for attending the safety committee meetings. Okay, moving to consideration of minutes. We've got minutes from July 25, 2023 and July 27 special minutes. Do we want to just do them all as one motion?
Yeah. I move approval of the July 25, 2023 and the July 27, 2023 special minutes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions is presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Hens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consent agenda?
I move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Hens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. We have no public hearing items. Additional items, that discussion and consideration, a proposal for disaster debris site development plan. Good morning, Amelia.
Okay, so as you know, we just bought 20 acres of land in case of a disaster where we could bring debris. And we did a first phase study prior to purchase to do some due diligence, make sure there wasn't contamination or other issues that would preclude that use. We did an RFP for that and contracted with SCS engineers. They've, they proposed during that RFP that they would be a second phase where we did a site development plan to show where do we need to add gravel on the site? Do we need to grade certain areas and stabilize them to put roll-offs on to, to take debris? Do we need to create cells to take debris? Do we need to create a detention pond for storm water? And, and kind of go through and illustrate what site improvements are needed, basically. So they've submitted a proposal now to complete those site improvements. It includes a kickoff meeting as well as a final report. So that's where that $31,000 cost is coming from. I added those three items together that you see in the proposal. This is about what we thought it would be when we worked with Lisa to figure out how to pay for the site and then their initial due diligence, phase one, and then we thought it'd be around 25,000 for, for this site development plan. They also included the option to do further environmental testing such as groundwater monitoring wells, air quality monitoring station. Just to establish a baseline in the event, we wanted to show that after use, there was or wasn't contamination of the site. However, it's clearly been in agricultural use. Phase one didn't show any other concerns. So if there's a certain comfort level with just saying this has been in agricultural use, stove or storage, I don't know if we need that extra expenditure. So what I brought forward was really just consideration of the site development plan. And I'm bringing this forward for two reasons. I think the site development plan will inform capital improvement requests that need to be made to do that actual work, to put the gravel down, to construct the cells or the detention pond. And I think this work's going to take about 120 days based on the proposal for, so that's four months. So what, it's July now. That puts us into October, November. So budget time. So I wanted to bring this forward now. If there's the interest in continuing this process so that we can make those requests as part of the CIP process. What, there's a couple of options with how we move forward if you'd like to do that. I could try to get a contract on next week. No promises. I'd need Ethan to help with that as well. We do have a previous contract we've used with SCS, so I don't think it would be, be that much of a, of a staff time issue. But that would allow us to do a kickoff meeting before my last day, potentially, so that I could kind of shape what we're thinking it needs to look like. If we can't manage that timeline, we could have an interim director or wait until there was a permanent director. There is also an option to do that, but I would say, you know, there is a certain level of just monitoring, you know, a consultant's work that needs to occur. So just to be aware of, you know, if we had a permanent director in the position constantly going back and forth, what, what we needed with the consultant as they're preparing this site development plan, there might be some more oversight than there otherwise would be if we move forward now. And so I think the question before you this morning is if you want to move forward, how do you want to balance the need for oversight with the need to move forward in a timely fashion so we can make capital improvements requests and make sure this site is usable in the future? You could also consider the environmental conditions evaluation. I don't think that's necessary at this point. We could bring that back up during the CIP process. Or you could direct us just to put this on a future agenda for consideration when there's a permanent director or even request bids or proposals. It, it falls under the need for competitive quotes. And we have worked with SCS before on this project. So I didn't think we necessarily needed to do more proposals because they're kind of uniquely suited at this point to work with us on this project, but that's also, that's option four in your memo.
So the only thing that has been done with this land, other than agriculture, is when it was a stover site, and the only improvement that was done then was the driveway and the rock that was put down to put the stover on. I don't see that needing an environmental study at all.
I don't think so either.
Good.
Amelia, you, you put down 31,250 on here, but then you also mentioned putting it in our capitals. So I'm a little confused. Are you looking?
The 31,250 is for the cost of developing a plan that would then inform the capital's requests. Yes. Because that plan's going to show us we need to construct a barrier around the property. How much will that cost? Put that in the CIP.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. Counties around here have sites like this. I suppose Marshall County has a debris site after they had the tornado. And so much weather damage, do we know?
They have a landfill.
They didn't, they?
I don't know.
Landfill for their temporary site?
I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay, just curious.
Yes, but the consultants also on, on the Zoom and they might. Know some more about what other surrounding counties have done. I know, for instance, Butler County, where Parkersburg is located, used the football field after that tornado.
Well, that's why I'd like us to go quickly on this.
Yeah.
Because that's the kind of thing you have to do if you're not prepared. And we've been working on this, well, since the deratio. We've been thinking about this, working on this. My sense, just, just for discussion purposes, my sense is that. We could, we should move quickly.
Okay.
Keep it moving.
Yeah. And I did talk to the consultant about, you know, after the kickoff meeting, what level of oversight will be needed?
That was my question.
I think the kickoff meeting is mainly. Built in so that we lay out exactly, this is the type of debris. This is how much that we have to plan for, so that, you know, is already established before they start work. I think the check-ins would mainly be on, you know, are we on track? Are there any hiccups that come up? Does the final report satisfy us?
This is just something I thought of. I wonder if facilities management could assist in any way. While, while we don't have a full, a permanent director, if, if there's, if you would be willing, thank you, Joby, to do that. And I know that Sandra's also going to be working with an interim director. So there are some other people who could help.
Yeah, absolutely. I just didn't want to put that responsibility on anyone without discussing it. Yeah. Thanks. But I do think if you want to pursue alternative one, you know, we do have a contract we've agreed on with SCS in the past. So there is, I could really try to get it on next week's agenda so we could get the kickoff meeting. Scheduled with Joby and Sandra and interim.
And that might be a stretch because we have another person leaving as well.
Yes, I will talk to him.
Okay.
Since we do have that pre-approved format, fingers crossed. Otherwise, call me for the kickoff meeting. I'll take vacation time or something.
All right, any further questions?
No, is it me?
It's me. Go ahead.
I can't remember. I'd make the motion to approve the proposal, proposal for the death disaster debris site development plan for thirty-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars.
Would you want to add in direct staff to finalize the contract?
And have direct staff finalize the contract for SCS.
In the kickoff meeting as soon as possible.
And have a kickoff meeting as soon as possible.
Great.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Edens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye.
Thank you.
For bringing that forward, Amelia.
Yeah.
Amelia, thanks for all your work on this.
We have no departmental reports or other reports, upcoming agenda items?
I may have something with Salvation Army in regards to their vehicle maintenance. But that probably would be after I get back. And I need to talk with Kathy a little bit more on that before bringing anything forward.
Should have a proposal for grant matches for the NOFA eight broadband. Grant requests next Tuesday. Ninety percent done, just waiting for a little information to fill in the blanks.
Okay, great. Now it's time for public comment number two. Comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law. But may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. See, no one raised their hand or come forward. We'll close public comment number two. And move to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Edens, you want to start?
Sure, I will be attending the ribbon cutting tonight in Colo. And then tomorrow I will be in the office. I do have appointment at three o'clock over in Ames. I will be out Thursday and Friday and all next week, helping out my daughter, but I will be zooming in to all my meetings. Or calling in as well, depending what mode is available for me.
Safe travels. Thank you. Where's Merkin?
Ribbon cutting at Colo, late afternoon in the office tomorrow. Thursday, a webinar on B broadband funding and also another meeting on. Department of Health and Human Services study proposal with ISAC. Friday, AEDC Executive Board, middle of the day. And. Monday, it looks like we have a drainage district meeting.
Yeah.
Yep, we do.
Yes, we do. Okay, that's what I got.
Lot of those same, same events. I've got a meeting here tomorrow morning. And then I've got an appointment, a personal appointment tomorrow afternoon. Thursday, Alternatives Board Meeting and Friday, Go Green Team Meeting. And then Monday, Joint Drainage District Meeting and then possible Women of NICO Exec Committee Meeting. So kind of my lighter week.
I did want to mention, I had a MICA meeting last night and they are reviewing, they have done an in-depth kind of survey. Of all the counties that they serve in our region. And the top four issues facing families are food insecurity, mental health, wage deprivation and childcare. What was the third one? Food insecurity, mental health, wage, wage. So deprivation, so the expand of, of not having enough financial resources.
Okay.
And stuff. And then childcare.
Sounds like that's right on par.
Right.
What we're hearing.
But they are, they're also looking at. By a new way, they're doing, collecting information that can now look back over several years and then going forward, they'll have. That good baseline and going forward and seeing if what they're doing more in depthly is, is. The difference that it's making in addressing those particular areas. But they did say this is the first time that food insecurity was number one. On the list for the, for the region. That usually has not been, it's usually been childcare or mental health, which are still in there, but food insecurity was number one.
Yeah, the changes to snap then.
Yeah, yeah.
Significant. One more thing for your calendars, August twenty-sixth from ten to twelve is overdose awareness day. Celebration at Banjo Park in Ames. There are going to be several different agencies tabling there and. Speakers should be, it's, it's always been a really great event. So it should be really good again this year.
Tonight is National Night Out.
Tonight is National Night Out. And Ames, they're celebrating or recognizing at the Gateway Hills, the church on Gateway Hills Park Drive. I cannot remember. I can remember Gateway Hills Park Drive, but not the church.
Anything in city church?
Nope, no, it's, it's out by the skating rink.
Oh, oh, that one. Okay, okay. Up of Martenson.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
All right, anything further?
I move we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.